This time we'll call the Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to Order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are your supervisors. Lisa Smith, we learned that from the Auditor's Office, Luan Goke from the Supervisor's Office. And as usual, our first appointment this morning is David Dreyer, Jackson County Engineer.
Morning, David.
Morning, Alan. Two permits to have approved this morning. First is a residential permit for Brittany and Alan McCormick in County Township, Section Six. On the Iron Bridge Road. Recommend approval of that permit. The second permit for Ronald Castle in Hotter Creek Township, Section Twenty Eight, a field entrance off of two twenty six Street.
So moved. Do you want them separate since one's residential and one's a field?
Okay, I would move to approve the entrance permit for Brittany and Alan McCormick for residential driveway.
Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
Make a motion to approve Ronald Castle, Hotter Creek Township.
Second.
With motion in a second to approve Ronald Castle's field entrance permit, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
No, that's all I have. Day laborers.
For me?
Day labor workers.
The winus three one completed.
Took a trip down to the cat bridge.
It's all cleaned up.
Could not get it across.
After they took it out, an eighteen wheeler pulled up.
Oh, you're kidding.
You know, there is something there though. So the sign, when you turn off of forty fifth, I think, is it? Says no outlet or dead end. But when you turn on the actual road where the bridge was on, it doesn't say that.
We have added some additional signs. I don't know when you were out there that was gonna make some changes because the resident was.
After the last meeting, I went out and looked, but so it was way up by the first turn. It says no outlet or dead end or something. But when you turn on the actual road.
Yeah, he was making some changes.
Bridge out.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything. So maybe the road going straight ahead had no outlet and he turned right and he come into a bad situation.
Well, he was.
Especially if you're an eighteen wheeler.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Try to turn my back and steal some.
To now, so it's you, Jack, if you knew that road at all, you had no business on your agenda with a six.
No, I know the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is, what is. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lisa, do you want to do your?
It's gonna take me quite a bit. So, yeah, I'd like to. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December seventh, twenty twenty one, and December tenth, twenty twenty one, board proceedings. As written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
The move.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, Sarah has arrived, so should we do Sarah?
You were, you were kidding. You said it was gonna take a long time.
I'm done. As soon as you go, I'm done.
That's quick. So all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Thank you. That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you.
Sure, you got two minutes.
This is gonna start. You guys try to get done by nine thirty or what?
Correct. Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we're moving along in the opioid settlement process, I guess. I do apologize for not getting you copy of the resolution earlier. I wasn't able to get through it. And there's significant number of changes needed to be made. The draft resolution provided by ISAC was actually done by the litigating county's attorney. And so I need to be changed significantly, in my opinion, due to the fact that we are not a litigating county. So I did make changes so that it's clear that a law firm does not represent us. And but then the other parts that do apply to us as a settlement county.
So when I took it, they hired an independent litigation team, of course.
So sixty-six of the Iowa counties signed on to law to the lawsuit and hired, I think there's three defense attorney or three. Not defense attorneys, three attorney law firms that are involved. They're listed, actually, in the first page, Kruger Dickinson, Simon Tamlin Conroy and Ron Reason and Roper. So. Very.
Merry Christmas, Jack.
I bump it all the time. I guess I'll have to cut that out.
So basically, the gist of the resolution is that, one, Jackson County has already agreed to the settlement. In fact, Lisa had signed both settlement agreements, one with the distributors and one with, I think, Johnson and Johnson. The only other thing we have to do, unless they tell us later, we gotta do more, is sign the opioid. The Iowa opioid allegation memorandum of understanding. And that is the document we are signing with the state and how the funds are gonna get distributed. And basically fifty percent is gonna go to a state fund. And then fifty will be distributed amongst all counties that sign on. Fifteen percent of the county, fifty percent is gonna go into a backstop fund. So the attorneys for the sixty-six counties have to get their funding from this national. I can't remember exactly what it's called, but there's a, as part of the settlement, a fund was created for the defense attorneys. But if they don't get at least fifteen percent of the distribution to the sixty-six counties, then they can come back to the state for that. And so they've created this, they're gonna set aside this fifteen percent from the top. In the event that they get all of their fees covered by the national fund, then they won't need this. It'll get distributed to the counties.
They wanna make sure they get paid. Sure. The, the other thing is, and then how much of it's left, but in this, in both of these, in the resolution and the memorandum, what I read in some of that. Is like especially in number three in the first page. It said expenditures shall consist with the, be consistent with the categories. You might get an exhibit E. I never seen an exhibit E, but do we have expenditures?
So. Exhibit E to the National Master Settlement is also exhibit one to the memorandum of understanding. So I, the email that I sent with the resolution included all of those documents rather than printing them out. Some of them are rather lengthy. And basically what exhibit one is, is the list of things that we can use the funds for. That's what that's referring to.
So are we looking more like into law enforcement type things or?
Not necessarily, actually.
It's pretty specific.
Um, it is.
And what we have, I know we talked about this before.
Now, it has to be, it has to be, that's the other thing. It's all forward thinking. It's all forward. So anything that we want to use the funds for has to be. Has to start after the settlement. So we're not going backwards. And there's fifteen pages of things that can be used. Treatment. Melox Narcan, I think you've heard of that, about that. That's another expensive, it could be used to purchase that. I know that, I, I don't know about all law enforcement. I'm pretty sure all of the deputies have one. I think all law enforcement has some. It does expire, so it has to be replaced.
I heard it was really expensive too.
So it's, it's something that could be used for that, to keep that in.
We're already doing that. Doesn't it have to be something new or can replace what we're doing? Okay.
Nope. The whole point is to, so we can't go back, like we wouldn't be able to refund ourselves for the what's already in the squats, for example. But we can certainly, as they're expiring, use that. And it doesn't have to be specific to Jackson County. It could be for all law enforcement throughout the county. And things at the hospital can be, you, you used to help pay for things there. One thing that actually I don't know. As you're aware, opioids is one of the, the drugs that we address in the JCPC DSC grant. And one of the things we talked about at our last meeting was that Julie is talking with. Osterhaus about seeing whether or not they could start up an MAT program, which would be the Subboxo, I think. So basically, using medication to help opioid addicted persons come down safely. This money could also be used for that. And so we might wanna work with. JCPC and maybe support some of what they're already doing. So that's, I mean, there's, it's.
So you certainly say we have the potential for use if we do.
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
And you'll be able to guide us as.
Absolutely.
That's what we need.
Well, I think there's, yeah, there's more than one player. That's the thing, you know, when you look at the big picture, like you said, going forward. It's, you know, people, your brothers and sisters, you're taking pain medication for something and.
Well, and I think the thing to keep in mind is while opioids, there is a crisis, it's definitely an issue. I think it needs to be addressed more on the treatment side than on the criminal side. We actually don't see that many charges for possession of opioids. That's not to say they're not being used. It's that. That's not what people are being found with. However, we've had some overdoses from it, so it's certainly here. But I think if you're going to address it, the preventative side, the helping to. Helping people who are already addicted to overcome it is a better use of funds than. The jail and prosecution side of things.
Yes. So do we have a resolution number?
We do not because.
Oh, you do have it. I'm sorry.
It's number eight forty-eight, eight forty-eight dash twelve, dash fourteen, dash twenty twenty-one.
And as soon as you approve this, I'll look at it on resolution.
Okay.
Make a motion to go through.
I would second. And there's no negatives to us, correct?
Correct. And to be honest, if we were to decide that we didn't wanna use the funds, we can always. The language is in.
I read, do you know, can we allocate to our neighbor or something you wanna go out to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carrying.
All right, so I will go let Shelley know about that and then I'll get with you afterwards, because this also authorizes you to sign that. So we can not gonna present family. Um, they have a copy and I guess we can talk about it if we want, but that's basically what the resolution was. Was authorizing you to sign it and then they'll sign the resolution. All right.
I, I would tend to do that before you go.
Do what?
Give you your proof, do you have memorandum of understanding?
Um, you can do it separately if you want to. It's included in the resolution.
Okay, we don't need to, it won't matter why I make that motion.
Yeah.
And authorize Lisa to sign, I guess, right?
Yeah, now therefore be it resolved, number three, the execution of the allocation MOU by executing the acknowledgement and agreement.
So we'll be in Jackson, the first one, Lisa the second one, we might as well pass that motion or what?
Go for it.
I made the motion.
The move gets seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I mean, we wanna go back to your agenda that, since it was so long.
I, I know.
You certainly didn't. Louanne, do you wanna come up?
He's not.
Do we have any citizens on here? It's coming. Okay.
Chad.
Morning. Yeah. Um, all I have for you today is the calendar. At eleven o'clock today, Isaac has an ARPA webinar by Zoom and at two o'clock on Naco has an ARPA webinar by Zoom. Which any of you can attend if you want to. Four o'clock this afternoon is a McCoke River Watershed Management Executive Meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at seven o'clock tonight is the public hearing on the Jackson County redistricting.
And that is here.
In the basement in the community. At seven o'clock.
On Wednesday, December fifteenth, at ten AM, is a LWDA leadership and Iowa workforce development town hall meeting by Zoom for Jack. Or if he chooses, he can attend the five thirty session of same thing. However, he wants to do that. Also, starting at eleven o'clock tomorrow is our Jackson County Employee Holiday Celebration. It will be a progressive party up and down the hall and up to the outlying offices. Thursday, December sixteenth, from one thirty to three o'clock is the Governor's Childcare Task Force webinar. Available by Zoom to any of you that want to do that. Six o'clock on Thursday night is Limestone Bluffs RC and D meeting, either in animals or by Zoom. I'm not sure that. We have an in-person option yet, but that's for Jack. Friday, December seventeenth, at one PM, I tentatively have done a de-cat meeting, but she has not confirmed that for you, Mike. Saturday, December eighteenth, is the auction of the former hospital. Monday, December twentieth, at three PM, is a regional governing board in, a meeting in Davenport for Jack. At five o'clock, Jack had the Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Board meeting by Zoom. And at seven o'clock that night, I tentatively have done it together with Bill meeting, also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, December twenty-first, at nine AM. And that evening, at six o'clock, is the Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville, at least for Larry.
Do we know what time or place the auction to the hospital? Is that available by Zoom also, I would think?
I have no idea. I can reach out to Janet and see if she can tell me, but I haven't heard anything like that.
I would do that.
Okay.
I would think if there are people from out of the state or out of the country, that they would be able to.
Well, she has to be there to be a part of the meeting. That's maybe the question, but I will ask her about it.
Nice to know what time it is.
Yeah.
If they're boards, it's gotta be an open meeting.
I'm not sure if it is a, a meeting or if it's all being handled kind of behind the scenes by that guy that they hired. Right.
I thought there were bids on it. I mean.
Maybe they had to submit their bids. I don't know how they handled it. Hopefully not.
Realized it was gonna be back and forth auction thing. I thought people would put in their bid or whatever and see what happened.
Well, they call it an auction. It doesn't mean that it could be a sealed bid.
Well, maybe it's like what you do for the county farm. Probably everybody puts theirs in and then take off and bid.
You could just double check with their and see.
Yep, I will do that. That's all I have for you.
Okay. Is Marty coming in?
I haven't seen Marty. I don't know. I see that his grave van is here. He's not due till nine thirty, so.
Yeah, I know. At this time, we'll recess until we're, find out whether Marty is joining us or not. At this time, we'll reconvene the meeting and we're being joined by Marty Hootle, Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor.
Morning.
Morning.
Ah, let's see, we're starting the care facility. I do believe I have the drain field all done. We may, I got all the dirt we have there leveled out. We may need more dirt though, because it's still low in a few spots, but I used all the dirt we had there in the pile. The septic tanks are pumped, the lids are fixed. He didn't, he called, said he was coming, but he never called me and told me for sure what all he did, but I'm assuming that it's done. Okay. Here's the courthouse. I, I don't know if it's due to the street or what, but I've been having terrible problems with the toilets. I don't know if it's the water or what, but I think I do have them working. The women's employees here was the worst and I, I think I, the last couple of weeks, I think I, I haven't had any complaints on them. They usually would flush and not shut off or they wouldn't flush. So I got that fixed. And in the process of taking the lawnmowers to the care facility and snow equipment here, still haven't heard from the new lawnmower yet. Last I heard, it was on one of the container ships set in the ocean, so.
Doesn't surprise me.
Yeah.
A lot of grass out there. Seaweed.
Lot of ships, a lot of ships over from what I hear. I cleaned the cooling tower off for the winter, get it ready for winter, shut the water off, do it. I'm trying to get triple C here. The roof is styrofoam and then it's got like an eighth inch membrane of silicone over top of it. And I'm, it's not leaking and broke, but it's bubbled. So I'm trying to get him here to give us a price so I can get it, put it in the budget to repair, because it does need to be repaired. But I am having a heck of a time getting that gentleman here. I've been at him for about a month now, I think, trying, or maybe a little over a month to get him here.
I just got a flyer from Enos Miller. They do conglomeroofing locally. I think they're out of Southern Wisconsin or something.
Do they?
For flat roofs.
Do they do the styro though? That, all's what I want is it repaired, you know, because it's, it's still in real good shape. It's just the, the silicone separates from the styro and then they'll just come and cut it out and redo it. So, yeah. I think this roof was put on and I think it was before both of us were here, about eighty-five, eighty-four.
Wow, that's a long time.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's still in decent shape. I, I don't go up there all the time, but I go up there a couple, three times a year. And I noticed when I was doing what?
Lisa said she was here. That's, that's been a good year.
Anyway. Let's see, where was that? The.
On the roof.
Yeah. So we got that taken care of. Hopefully I'm getting here. The, the heat cap building, the parking lot extension is done.
Are you putting the sign back up for the museum?
Well, we need to redo that sign because the post is just completely rotten off and so is the thing. Can I make one of them or not? Is that under my jurisdiction?
Actually, that would be an historical society.
Well, they need to put a new sign up because it's, it's, it's completely rotted away.
Okay, I will inform Bonnie.
Okay. I just put, there's a big pile of dirt there. I told the contractor when he was doing it that we wanted the dirt. I took the excess dirt to the new jail site, put it on the, like fifty feet out on the east side of the new foundation. So hopefully it's out of the way when they build everything. I kept a little bit there. I put a little backfill around the building a little bit and finished around the parking lot. So hopefully next spring, it, when it's leveled out, it's nice. And there's a manhole there. I filled around that because we keep hitting that. Excuse me.
I guess I had a question.
Okay.
I've, I've driven by there several times and I, I have a hard time figuring out how the people are gonna get. Into the area closest to the street. How are they gonna get in and back out? When we have that patch of grass there and it just doesn't seem like it connects.
You come around this way and go in. Okay.
Yeah. But if there's seven, you know, five or six cars there, I just, I really tried to figure out how it was gonna work.
I don't know. They're parked in there. They get in and out. Okay.
Yeah, but they're not parking on the new part.
Oh, yeah.
They're not supposed to for a year.
Oh, no, 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 just we can't put salt and sand on it for a year. They can park on it, but we, we're, we're not gonna put salt or sand, we could, but we're not putting salt on it, okay? Because I called him.
I misunderstood. I've talked about it before.
Okay.
But it just, it looked like it would be difficult if you were the middle car to back up and get around the cars, because there's not a lot of space.
I don't know. They seem to, to do it. I don't know.
I'll have to go try it.
Okay.
And if I get stuck, I'll call you.
Have you painted any lines on it?
No, because we might be able to do that tomorrow, but I don't, I think it's gotta be such a, such a degree before you do that, don't you? But I will do it eventually.
Okay.
All right. And we've had problems with people driving. I keep thinking it's grocery, but I don't know what street it is, but they drive from the parking lot of the ball softball field on the north end of the fairgrounds. Through there and Frank and his men, I contacted Frank. And Frank and his men went up and put posts in between the posts. And I, I haven't noticed tracks there since then, so I think we may have that taken care of. I have a recall on my red truck, the one I really like. They say if you leave it idle too long, something cracks when it re-generates. I'm not a really an auto mechanic, but I just got that about a week ago and I will get a hold of Brad Deary out here, take it there. The jail, the wash machine was leaking and the part was like four hundred dollars. And the new wash machine was eight hundred and some odd dollars. So I accidentally thought it was one.
Unit?
Yeah. So I said, go ahead and do it, not realizing that this, because the other ones we have are one unit. This one separates. Well, they were eight hundred dollars a piece, but the machine's eleven years old. And I still think it may have been a good decision, even if I didn't make it knowingly. But. They got a new washer dryer. With, if they move, they can take it with it if they need it or something. It was my bad. I, because the one I have in the, in the garage over there, the one we have down at the senior citizen. They're one, a one unit thing. They don't separate. This one did.
So we have actually another dryer functional.
Yes, yes. And I did keep them, keep them. Um. And other than the combo doorknob on Arden's office and I'm gonna clean the carpet, have spec command clean the carpet, I think I'm done in there. I got her thermostat moved and everything.
Tighten up the closure.
Yes, yes. At the, on the dory, yes, I think I got all that working good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, did I see the email come to Watson Parking Issues?
Uh. Andrew sent Lisa and I a, if I speak wrong.
Yep.
Wanted to know if instead of parking over here, that they could park in the Penrose Ann.
I met Andrew in the hall last weekend. He had mentioned that to me and I. Basically told him I did not think that was an option at this time, that that parking lot is for that building.
Yes, and if they do park in there, it would. Make it so if we, they had visitors, the parking lot would be full.
Absolutely, yeah.
And.
And he was gonna talk to new McCokeville Police Chief and see what the option was for them.
Okay.
To park in their lot there and be, thus be good neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't know why, but like maybe the, we could talk to the sheriff and see if the, they got that transport van. I, as far as I can see, it doesn't get used much. Maybe park that up there. That would give us another spot. I, and I'll talk to Brad about it.
Yeah, that's what it always was when we got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's pretty understanding.
Yeah. He carries a weapon, don't forget.
Yeah.
The entry door here, are we just gonna leave that open, case aside or?
Uh, I didn't know. I just come up the hallway. That's the first I knew. What it was is.
The inside door's standing open.
Well, Mike, they open that in the morning when they vacuum and hold it open, shut it off, so it stays open to vacuum the carpet. He just forgot to turn it back.
Today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ever since the last guy come and fixed that door.
He fixed it.
He fixed it. I, it's been working super since then. I shouldn't say that.
I got a question on the space at the care facility where that garage door was separate from the machine, I'm gonna call the machine shed. That the county uses for storage and it was concreted and that was to be cleaned out?
It is.
Okay, is there room in for some storage in there for nine-one-one equipment?
Well, I just put my lawnmowers in there. Because.
You putting your lawnmowers?
In that shed there. That's where I put them.
In the next.
No, I put it in there because the, the big one's full. You, I don't think you could get anything. No, I put it in there, because the the big one's full, you, I don't think you could get anything else in that big.
Okay, so Jared told me we could use that north stall in the long building. And pianos and organs, by the way, I think are gonna be either.
Is the filing cabinets gone and all that? Then they.
The material inside the filing cabinets is gone, but the filing cabinets and cells are empty in there.
So couldn't you couldn't open the door, just carry it in?
There's a walk-in door, it's all sitting there, right?
Right, what kind of equipment you're talking?
Well, I don't know, I mean, the dish is only three foot, but I think the problem is the rules of wire, and they don't really want them to sit outside.
Okay.
I mean, the box they sent parameters in kilometers or something, so I figured out it was thirty by forty by twenty, so.
I can take my lawnmower down underneath there, put that in there, you just wanna remember that's not type climate controlled. And I use about a gallon of rat poison a month in there.
And the and the wooden would be shaking to me.
Yeah, no, 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 in the cement pad with the little garage door, it's not miles tight. It it, I feed, I I buy that bucket about that big like that lasts about three months up there.
So how much is one of these shipping containers? About once.
Couple grand.
At their.
What's that?
They still have them over Wyoming, do they?
I don't know, um, every once in a while, they have them out here at the auction house, but I I haven't seen one out there. But you on Craigslist, you can, they're a couple grand, I do believe, make or more, maybe if you have to deliver, maybe a little more.
I know the guy in the view ransom ourselves, and maybe just check in even just for anyone, something that, I mean. We don't wanna get roll wire too, though. You can actually use your lawnmowers in that other shuttle too.
Down below, that's that's what I said, this was open and it's really nice in there, so I just kept to put it in there, but I can move it down below.
Talk to Frank about what out in the airport building, they threw the room for a couple boxes out there or something too, I, you know.
I'm thinking you want if it's, because mice like wire, I'm telling you, you're gonna want something that's tight, otherwise you're gonna have problems. How much stuff is it, I mean?
We can't get an answer.
Okay.
I mean, there's a couple stools of wire, I don't know how big they are, they sent the dimensions on the box, like I said, in.
And how long do we have to store them?
And I asked, asked what's her name, what what that, it's about forty by forty by twenty, so it's an apple box.
I think, just my opinion, I agree with Larry, I think you ought to get a container and rent it or something, because. Every time I go to get my combine out of, out of, come out of the shed, the wires are eight, and then you gotta patch wires, because they like wire. I don't know why, but they do. And you'd hate to have a roll of wire, I don't know what it would be worth, but you'd hate to have a roll of wire and have it all laid out.
And how long do you think?
You know, it's one of them things that when can they get at, can they get, can they, that we found out that they did the study on the tower, and it's structurally safe. For this guy willing that it's structured safe for the dish. Um, so we just gotta figure out basically what do you get them here? So where would we put a container if we got?
I guess it's usually.
How about in the Penrose parking lot?
The front lawn.
Or you could use a front branch.
You can put it on the nine-foot sidewalk out in front, or.
Or in the corner, oh, I think about the county line somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, you could put that anywhere.
See what they are to rent, and maybe it's cheaper just to buy one.
All right, so do you want, do you want a twenty footer or forty footer?
Okay, first of all, talk to Lynn and see what kinda, he's gonna get back with that guy, I mean, we're not just gonna buy one to have one. We've got enough storage most of like, you know, time is just, yeah. And maybe it's something we just could rent a regular storage unit too. I mean, the thing is, if that building goes up, it'd be a perfect spot, you want it in your apartment corner, and you're done, I mean, we, in three months, we're gonna have a lot of storage, I think.
Yeah.
So.
It's gonna be.
When is this coming?
The building?
The the wire.
I'm not sure that either.
Okay.
What are you sure? I'm sure we're gonna get it. Yeah, last night, I don't know when I have.
I had it for about. My wife's got it right now.
And it feels good, it's just a more.
Okay, I can do that, anything else?
When are we gonna do something with the stuff we got from the hospital?
We like out in the north lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been talking to my bright hand man Mike, and I told him we need to stuff that down in the basement somewhere, he's gone, was gone this week, he looked back. Thursday, and we were gonna put it down the hallway, to at least to get it out of the north lobby.
Need to get the stuff out of the lounge and put the new stuff that we got from the hospital into the lounge. We can put the conference table downstairs where it belongs, and the other conference table can go in the other room where it belongs. And then we'd have a lot less to worry about, stuff.
Yeah, so did we have to get that pallet of carpet that they had?
I never got any carpet, I didn't, I.
We talked about it.
I knew nothing about that system.
Did we get that?
The what?
We got TV done, I don't know if, did you get all the cables that day, drilled out?
Yep.
Communication access with the microphones and things like that.
It's all there. All from the conference room?
Yeah.
I mean, you took a lot of them, show, make make your room down there really nice.
You look wonderful down there.
All above the floor.
We're not done yet, we still have work to go, but we had. We have a little work to do first.
Probably do, and Lisa can back me up on this, we have a room down in the basement that's full of stuff that. Some of it we need to keep, the other dirt, but some of that stuff, nobody's ever gonna use it, and I think we should load it up and get rid of it, don't you?
I call that the junk room.
Yeah, it is.
Be cleaned out.
But if we got rid of some of that, maybe we could put some of that communication.
Well, that's.
Stuff down there.
That's kinda what I was thinking, how much, and that's really what I was thinking.
We're storing stuff that we, nobody will ever.
So those are only forty inches about like that, by that.
And how many of them is there?
Just a couple, right, three maybe?
I'm sure.
You can put on a roller car and take it down the elevator and put it in there, and then we don't have.
This one, I'll get ahold in, and I'll have him make me a list, and see if he can give me some dimensions, and then we'll find a place for it.
I I was thinking that, but I didn't want to mention that, because it would take a little bit of work on our part, and I'm not sure we got time right now, but. With that being said, it's only a couple of boxes here and there.
If you can drag this what you want, we'll do.
Set them on one of those racks.
Yeah. Well.
They are nice, they are really nice.
The other thing, Marty, and I, you can do what you want, but I I would make yourself one of those rolling carts that we really liked that was at the hospital.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be a wonderful winter project after you're done blaming snow someday.
Yeah, a really nice cart that's down underneath the conference table, that is mine.
I wonder.
It's, you know, name on it, and possession is. Thank you, Larry. Tony appreciates it.
Either that, or I would suggest, even because the filing cabinets up at the inter Jackson Care Facility, we could probably move. Some of those filing cabinets around if we want them, and then I, depending on how many boxes, you know, if you want. I'm sure that's expensive wire, um, if you want them out there, that's fine, I think we could probably make some movement in that room. Would be a little harder to get.
My guess is that the rules of wire are rather large and heavy, the box is not heavy, it's only forty some pounds. But my guess is, how are you gonna get them in there?
Okay.
Unless we put an outside door in that building.
Well, like I said, we'll we'll see what the size, if he can give me the size, because it it, I wouldn't think it'd be wider, because them doors, I'm pretty sure. Are three O's, I'm sure we could wheel it through there.
If if not, we maybe could look at the.
Two-wheel car, we could get it.
The shipping we done.
We got a chainsaw.
For forty pounds, the boxes that he told us.
The box of wire are only forty pounds?
Wire, the box of equipment.
Okay.
So are we talking spools of wire?
I think so.
Oh, well, that's different.
I'll I'll get ahold of Lynn and.
He was trying to get some more information from the engineer.
Yeah. Okay. So you think you wanna. Want a garage door in the thing there, you want me to get a price for that?
When you're up there sometime, it wouldn't be a bad idea.
You know, that's something we, me and Mike could probably put in for.
If we do that, it's not, then that's our space too. Yeah, so you're talking about underneath that building that you just redid?
No.
No.
No, we're talking the brown shed where the big thirty thousand gallon water tank, there's a room in there that's pretty. Fixed up nice, but it's just got two walk doors here and here, we're thinking about putting a garage door on the east end of it. So we can get right into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, all right.
And they all work on the hospital stuff.
Okay, we will, I've been trying to get, figure out where to put that with Mike, I really have.
Not gonna happen.
Thank you, have a good week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's five minutes. Okay. Do we have any other business other than our work sessions on the budget?
If they have a motion to return. I'm just looking, I don't think I have any other reports.
I would second.
Been moved in second, did all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried. Okay, all.